We also had a hearing that we opened and then closed and moved it to July 21st. It'll be reopened in regards to the monopine tower that Verizon is putting in the city of Clearlake. And anybody that has an interest in that, come back on the 21st and we will have a public hearing again at that time. Then the rest of the evening was spent on training for the planning commission. A couple of our commissioners are fairly new. This was primarily ethics training, so that they make sure the public gets a fair treatment when they come before us. It's very important to us to be able to give them an honest hearing and listen to what they have to say. And without any gifts or free meals or trips or anything else involved. So it is very important that all the commissioners understand this. And I think all five of us here are very ethically oriented, and that's not a problem. But it's still a good idea to go through the training whenever we have an opportunity to do so.
Do you want to call this regular meeting of Clearlake Planning Commission and Parks Recreation Committee to order Clearlake City Hall council chambers on July 7th, 2015, 6:00 PM? Can we know the call order?
Commissioner Sluton.
President.
Commissioner Antis.
President.
Commissioner Perkins.
President.
Vice Chair Hutchinson.
Here.
And Chair Webb.
President.
Join me in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any public comment tonight? Melissa?
No.
Okay. Do we have anything of concern during this? Are we going to do the orientation first? Or?
Well, I want to introduce myself first. I'm Ryan Jones. I'm the city attorney. I've sort of seen some of you in the community, but meeting a lot of you for the first time. We're actually going to go proceed right into the orientation because the first item of the agenda, which is the public hearing, we're going to actually delay that for two weeks. The reason being is that the mitigated negative declaration was finished today. And really, my advice was, the point of CEQA is to give people notice and the opportunity to read that, to see if they have comments, and to give you all the commissioners a chance to review it and see what questions come from the other staff. I felt like there wasn't enough notice and a reasonable opportunity of due process for folks to make comments on it. And as a result, I'm going to request that we continue that matter until, I think our next hearing will be on July 21st. Is that correct?
Yes.
And if that's okay with the planning commission?
Yeah, re-reading.
If we have some comments, can they be related to the applicant? I have some concern on one item. I'd like the other.
Yeah, I think it would be okay to make a comment about, it's already agendized. I think the public hearing regarding the mitigated negative declaration would not be appropriate because it wasn't aware. But if you want to make a comment about something related to this, that's not necessarily mitigated negative declaration, that'd be okay.
Any other comments, commissioners? Would you like to share?
Yes. Last meeting when we had a cell tower before us, there were concerns about the fall radius. And that was a small one, that the tower couldn't be really moved to a location where it wouldn't fall on an adjacent property. In this case, since it's a 20 acre, 20 plus acre property, I would suggest that the tower is now about 50 feet away from the property line. Maybe it can move to 70 feet from the property line, or 20 feet towards the west. That would be more than a concern.
Any other comments in regards to? That was a considerable discussion from the last conference. Bye. Okay. We have an open public hearing. Should we open the public hearing or just go ahead and postpone?
I would ask, I think you can ask for a public comment to see if anybody does have a public comment about this agenda item, but seeing really no action is going to take place with regard to mitigated negative declaration.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing to consider approval of mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact based on initial study IS 02-15 and approval of use term at 01-15 and variance application at 01-15. And we'll take comments from the public in regards to issues of all of this, if there are any.
This is the cell tower thing? You're talking about it now or something? I'm just curious.
Please come up and state your name.
Oh, my name's Lori. And I live out in Burns Valley area, and I'm just kind of curious what the, what, how, what the distance is of being from a cell tower help-wise. I've had cancer, and I'm just sort of curious about living near a cell tower. So that's, I don't know if that's going to be addressed at all tonight, or what?
Well, we're going to come back in two weeks to do the completion of the hearing.
Okay. So you're trying to discuss it.
Anybody who shows in the public room, you have the opportunity to go ahead and speak since you came to kind of trouble coming down here.
Okay.
We want to hear from you. And that's what we're doing at this point in time, in the first part of the two weeks. Are David going to train, Marshall?
Yes. Correct.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about health issues. I have a little concern about bees. I've heard cell towers are starting to make bees go away. That's not my main concern, but to help, help our business.
Yes, if you would like to read the mitigated declaration, there can't be a word for it on the staff report. Staff, yeah, the staff report. You can pick one up from the calendar.
Okay.
And that might give you some better idea of answering your questions.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Anybody else? If that's the case, I'll close the public hearing until we come back on the 21st of July and reopen it at that time. Okay. So then the next item of business is going to be the planning commission orientation then?
Yeah. Maybe a little bit, I think we'll do is turn the lights down if you don't mind a little bit. Well, good evening to the planning commission again. I'm Ryan Jones. I'm the city attorney of the year. And I haven't actually had the opportunity to come to a planning commission meeting yet, but was happy to have the opportunity to talk about an orientation today. So let me ask first, how many folks have been on the planning commission for more than a year? So a couple of you?
Same token disc.
So this commission does have some experience. You know, sometimes what we'll do is a new orientation for council members or commissioners when they first come on. But because we hadn't done this, I thought it was appropriate to just do it with everybody and have it a public meeting if anybody has questions. This is, I've got some slides. We're going to talk about a number of things. I did a very similar presentation to the city council because the truth is, the planning commission and the city council are held to pretty much the same standard. You're both a legislative body making decisions in front of the public. And so the Brown Act certainly applies to y'all, other public records act is applicable, ethics and conflict of interest. Those are some things that I want to touch upon. And if you have questions, you know, let me know as this thing goes on. And then we'll get a little bit at the end and ask Gray and Joan if they have any comments as we go. Feel free to jump in as we're talking about specific. We'll touch on land use, planning, and some CEQA issues as well. As, those are really kind of the main things that are going to be presented by the planning commission, so. Any questions before we start? So these are a few of the areas. We'll talk a little bit about your role, why you're serving here. Hopefully, you know, when you're appointed, you kind of have an idea what you're getting into. And we'll talk about the political reform act and campaign contributions, some of those things that I think are pretty necessary for this body. Because the most important thing, as we're talking about this, is we want the planning commission to know how important the planning commission is. You really are creating the fabric for land use and what this community is going to look like. And we're working through the general plan now, which is really that blueprint that should be kind of the bible that you're all going back to as to all your decisions are made, is this in conformance of the general plan, do you work through that? So the role of the commission, these are a couple, hopefully all brought your glasses today, but you have been appointed, you're created from the city council, and it is pursuant to state law. So it's a very important body. And really, all land use issues should be coming through the planning commission. Sometimes people will say, oh, let's just, let's just go right to the council and get their action on ordinance, whether it's zoning ordinance or something to do with otherwise done with land, maybe a project. That's really not the way it's supposed to work. And really, legally, it really is supposed to come through you all, as your, this is your role, is to help put your fingerprint on what the community is going to look like. And then certainly, your decisions have the ability to be appealed should the applicant want that to happen to the city council. And from there, they can appeal it to, with a writ of mandate, to a judicial body, to a court, if necessary. So you're going to assist in the general plan as well as specific plans. Those will all be coming through the planning commission. We'll talk a little bit about what the differences. And the general plan really is that, it's that document that every 10 to 20 years, we're going to come up with that says what we want in our community. And then the specific plan is more, as the word says, specific, it's a certain regions in the community of a particular project. You're going to hold hearings and enact on proposed changes to zoning ordinance and zoning maps, as well as hold hearings on tentative subdivision maps. So hopefully, you're familiar with the, or heard of the subdivision map act, and know that that's how, you know, if we're going to divide parcels, it's got to come through the commission. And if somebody wants to allocate their property and split it in half, they can't just do that on their own. They've got to do it through the process under state law. The other thing, even smaller font, I apologize for that. You do report to the city council with regard to public land acquisition, if that's something that's going to happen. Now, I realize that the planning commission kind of goes in ebb and flow with regard to your busyness. Sometimes you may go months and there's not a lot, a lot of projects. And then all of a sudden, you know, there's a Walmart expansion project, or there's other things coming up that now there is more activity with the planning commission. You just never know. It really is more of a reflection of the economy more than anything else, and how many permits or variances people may want for their properties. So you're going to promote the public interest in the general plan, advise the public regarding its implementation. You should be doing an annual review of the city's capital improvement programs and public works projects. The second to last one is you undertake special planning studies as needed. These are all pursuant to code. And the last one is interpret zoning code review and approve variances, CUPs and permits. So one of the bread and butter things that a lot of times a planning commission will do is somebody comes and says, I want a conditional use permit. I have CUP for, for whatever the case may be. This is, we're going to allow some kind of activity that is not permitted in that particular zone. So if somebody wants to have a, one I recently worked on was a salvage yard in an area that was, let's say, zoned commercial. But the commercial zoning says you can have a certain number of items, but a salvage yard is not listed. So in order to do that, they need to come to the planning commission and get a conditional use permit before they can be allowed into that kind of business. And usually, as, you know, that first order CUP to condition, you're all going to give some kind of requirement that they've got to undertake before they can do that. So let's say they want to do that type of business, but the condition is, you've got to have adequate parking. You've got to have something to mitigate maybe the smell, or do something to help ingress and egress into that particular establishment. And variances is just a little bit different. A common one of variances is usually, let's say a property owner wants the setback moved a little bit. Have you ever had something like that come before the commission? So if I want to build, maybe I want to have a big tool shed in my backyard, the code requires 50 or 25 foot setbacks, and the only way I can do it is, maybe within that 15 feet, I would come to the planning commission and say, this is what I want to do, but I need your approval to do it first. And that would be a variance because that's not permitted under the municipal code. And you can, you can offer those kinds of exceptions if that's something that you think is in, going back to that bible, going back to the general plan. Is this something that's in conformity with what we want for the, for the community and all the way down to that particular neighborhood or region? So those, those are kind of the roles of planning. What, are CUPs and variances things that are often coming before this body? Fair amount? How about, how about subdivision map or, you know?
We could jump there for a while, but not for a while.
Okay. Like I said, didn't they kind of come and go? And then certainly, projects, the one tonight was going to be CEQA type issue for a project on a monopine, right? A cell tower that had gone through the process of what kind of environmental impact there is. And you would approve or not approve that project?
Can I interject in?
Please.
I've worked in several jurisdictions and some that were good about going planning commission, some that tried to avoid planning commission. I'm a former planning commissioner in another community. I think the planning commission is very important, so I'll be trying to bring it as much to be nice as possible. I just want you to know that.
I think that's, I think that's the right way to do it. I think this, for some reason, really, community want to go, maybe not that they want to go right through council. It's really, what's the point of you being here? That's your focus. The council has maybe other issues they've got to deal with. They really are relying on each of you to make that decision. So I think in conjunction, we're going to try to push between Mr. Folsom and I, everything that we can to you all, so keep you guys busier. Political reform act deals with conflict of interest law. And city council members are usually pretty familiar with this. School board members are often familiar with this. Legislators, like in state and federal law, are familiar with it. But sometimes they're right in the planning commissioners who don't think that this applies them to the same degree. And that's completely wrong. I would think even more so because your hands are so tied into particular projects about what kind of conditions or whether it's going to be approved or not. You really can't have a conflict. And if you do, there's a court to basically refuse you from that conflict. So we'll talk about that. But the general rule is that you can't participate in anything that you have a financial interest in. And that applies to your spouse, that applies to any dependents. So grown children who have moved or, let's say, still live in the area but aren't no longer your dependents doesn't necessarily apply to them. But if you've got kids or grandchildren or foster kids, people under your care that your decision impacts, so if you give a, you know, if I'm your brother or sister or brother or son, come in and want to.
You can be my sister.
I'll do the makeup.
Yeah. Let's go with the son. So if I'm your son and I want to get a conditional use permit, the particular member of that related to just needs to step out. And the big thing about stepping out is, you stay in here and just be quiet, you're potentially influencing the rest of the commission. And whether it's your mannerisms or what have you, or maybe they just, maybe your colleague, Cheryl doesn't want to feel bad about doing something to Carl's son while he's in the room, that's something that you would rather have.
Rather do it to him than argue with him.
Yeah. That's behind his back, right?
Exactly.
That's their mantra here, is do bad things behind the wheel now. Just need to remove yourself from the room, and then you get called back in when it's appropriate. So I don't know if that is something that this commission has been doing routinely, if you're aware of it, because, you know, clearly, there's a medium-sized town, but it's small enough that you have a lot of contacts, and maybe even your home or your business is related to something that you're dealing with. You've got to, if it's something you're concerned about, call me or call Mr. Folsom and ask us, you know, I'm a little worried about this issue that's coming up. I may have a conflict. I'm within, you know, 500 or 600 feet of this particular project that we're working on. That monopine was in your backyard. I don't think that's something that you should be deciding on tonight. But there's nuances to that law, that's why I say, talk to it. Sometimes it's not black and white. Obviously, if your spouse owns a particular business, it's asking for a, you know, like a conditional use permit, that would be a problem. But some are a little more gray than that. And the interesting thing is, it's positive or negative. Even if it's something that hurts your financial income, you still shouldn't, you can't participate in that, do that matter. So there is analysis to, we'll kind of go over, you know, briefly. You guys are all public officials. It's got to be a decision that you're making, is, are you, are you being influenced in some way to make that decision? Do you have a financial interest? Does the financial interest directly or indirectly involve in the decision? So sometimes you may, the truth is, all your decisions have an impact on you in some way, right? I mean, if you think about it, this cell tower helps everybody who hurts everybody. You've got that cell phone provider that that tower is going to help your business. That is not related enough to you, that means you've got to step out. Because truthfully, it means all five of you have to step out of almost every decision. It's got to be much more direct than that. So is the interest material, meaning is it significant? Is it reasonably foreseeable that your decision will have a material effect? And is it, number seven is kind of the one I talked about that's related, that cell phone thing. Is what your situation is really different than everybody else in the community. If you're being impacted just like everyone else, and you don't have a conflict, and you can continue to address that issue. And sometimes there's decisions that require you to be a part of it, and that, those are ones that you don't, they're exempt from the conflict. Campaign contribution, my guess is none of you received camp, well, you're didn't run for this position, right? You're all appointed.
Yeah.
So campaign contributions will go over very quickly because it really is not as applicable. It's really more about people giving you gifts, okay?
What would come into play would be if somebody on the commission decided to run for council.
Well, it would.
Starting to get gifts before they were on the council.
Correct. During the campaign. But let's say you get a gift, the person who wants this application for the monopine comes to you and says, hey, I want to take you out to dinner tonight. That's a gift. And that, that potentially would be problematic as a, as a, it's not a campaign contribution, but that is a gift that's potentially looking, that has the appearance of influencing your decision.
And it doesn't matter if it's Taco Bell or however.
Well, there are some, no, there are de minimis. During the process, you cannot take any of them. But outside of that, there are some exceptions, but there, you know, there's reciprocal gifts. We'll talk about that a little bit. It's not a hard and fast, yeah, you can accept tacos from people if it's not in the middle of the procedure for your, that particular project. So if they, yeah, give you a de minimis gift outside of the process of that, that would be okay.
I go on the premise that if it doesn't pass the smell test, you know, if it would look funny to Chuck for me to take this taco from somebody.
Right.
I retired from the state of California Department of Motor Vehicles. So taking a taco from somebody could be conceived as a just don't do it thing. And that's what I just keep at S. You know, if, if it just, if it would look funny to any one person, you know, where it would look like I would be taking a gift, you know, of that type, I just don't do it.
That's the smart way to go, because these rules are the floor. This is the minimum, this is what the law requires you to do. You can't take certain gifts. I think your ethics go much higher than that. And certainly, an appearance that you want this body to look that's completely above board, we're in this because we're all community servants trying to do the right thing, not because we've gotten some handshake or a free meal, or they took us to their, right on their boat, or whatever the case may be. So I think that's a good way to go. I think any gift that is because of your position is problematic. Certain times, people that are friends of yours may have an application before you. And if you're exchanging gifts because you always do on birthdays, I think that's okay because that's not what we're talking about here. They're not giving you a gift because you're Ms. Hutchinson on the board. They're giving you this gift because I'm your friend, or you're my aunt, or something like that. So the gift limit from a, these are some of the gift rules. $440 during a year is what you can take. It's quite a bit. It doesn't apply as much to commissions as it does to sometimes council members because they're running for things. But just be aware of it. Be aware that there are gift rules. So here's the exceptions, family members, reciprocal gifts. So if we have a relationship, we've always given each other gifts, and I just happen to have an item before you, that's okay. If it is somebody that is, is, it is a restricted person, somebody who shouldn't be giving you a gift, you can either, you can decline the gift, or you can donate the gift to a charity. And that's something that some people will do. Again, my guess is in the history of being on this commission, have any of you received any gifts? You wish you did, probably, right?
We don't expect to get them in Clearlake. This is not the wealthiest community to deal with.
Sometimes people along with, you know, they think, hey, wait a minute, I got something coming before them, maybe this will help. And a lot of times, it's, you may not even realize, you know, a gift, if somebody hands you a ticket to a Giants game, you know that is a gift. But if it's something a little more, just speak.
Will they drive you to the game? Are they driving me to the game, or they should give me tickets?
Ryan, if I could. An example might be if an outside golfer is coming into a community that maybe is from a different culture. There are cultural, there are cultural cultures that, to them, processing an application is giving gifts. I actually had an older ring a case of liquor to me in a project in another city that was going forward. That was very normal to him. That's how he did business in this country. Obviously, not how we do business in this country or in this state. And so I had to decline, and he became very offended. And it took a lot of talking and explaining to get through that process to where he wasn't pulling away completely because it was something that we were very interested in that community. So you could conceivably be faced with something like that. So it's just, this is an important aspect to be aware of.
It can happen very easily, because I had it happen to me when I was a young deputy sheriff. They'd bail bond him to lock to pick up somebody from the jail. The first thing he did was a $100 bill on the town attorney. Because in Chicago, or, anyway, Philadelphia where he was found, they wouldn't even talk to him about it. Big difference. He went to jail there.
Yeah. That's an obvious one. And they lay a $100 bill.
Yeah, but I mean, with the different cultures, and not necessarily from another country.
And if I think, I think if something like that were to happen to anyone of you originally, you would want to pull a break in immediately to assist with smoothing over any hurt feelings that might have about from rejecting or declining to accept the gift or whatever, to try to keep it as a smooth, a smooth process.
Thanks for your comment. So the Brown Act, don't implement the Brown Act. This is an open meeting law. This is about transparency. This is about letting the public know what we're doing. There's really, and that's kind of the impetus for what happened earlier in the meeting tonight, you know? The concern was about the transparency of what we were doing, and the idea of tabling one issue for two weeks is because maybe it, maybe it's something that's foreseeable, the commissioners have already known what they wanted to do. They didn't even need to look at the, look at the mitigated negative declaration. So it's about perception. The perception really is reality when it comes to the Brown Act. So the purpose is to facilitate public participation. So not only do you need to do a transcript.
I want to ask you a question.
Please.
Earlier, you were just talking about that, maybe postpone something, and I don't know how to adjourn to a specific date. If it gets adjourned to a specific date, I don't think it has to be noticed again. But I think you have to state that. If they just, you just go on and have the meeting in two weeks, and all the notices are going to have to be done again, I believe that's correct.
That's, that is correct. You can just adjourn it. And I'm not sure what the supplements were about how we did that. I was thinking we would just re-notice the whole thing.
Oh, I, I was just going to say, noticing again. I thought maybe we could do it with a.
Well, you can do that with, if it's within a certain number of days, you can just adjourn it.
Yeah, to a specific date.
But part of the problem was the noticing. We didn't provide, the document wasn't ready in time, so I kind of want to redo it, so we have a clean slate to do properly.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Ryan, I think I have an answer to that. Because we've continued it, we don't have to re-notice it in the paper. What we do have to do is post it in the window and probably on our website, so.
And make the document available to folks. So the Brown Act is the open meeting requirement, and I, like I said, the bottom line, I think is a key one. Even if you think you're doing something right, it's how it looks to the community. You want it, you want it to look like you're doing everything above board for folks.
There's that taco again.
There's the taco. Some of these basic requirements, this is really more from Melissa when it comes to notice. This is really more from Melissa when it comes to noticing. She's going to make sure the agenda's posted for regular meetings 72 hours in advance. If we have a special meeting, it's only 24 hours in advance. The key, I think, is that the bullet, and this is why sometimes I do like to attend planning commission meetings, sticking towards on the agenda. So there's a... I think there's a desire a lot of times to launch into a topic that's very relevant or something that's come up in the community, but it's not on the agenda. The agenda says the items that we're going to talk about and that's all we can talk about. Now, the public and public comment can come up and talk to you about anything related to the city. But you all are limited to what's on the agenda. And the reason is because if I am somebody who's really interested in what the development's going to be on Lake Shore Drive, I'm going to watch the agenda until I see something come up on that. And if I don't see it on the agenda, then I won't come to the meeting. But once I see it on there, I would come and participate. So if you start getting into a conversation about, "What are we going to do about this particular business along Lake Shore or along Olympic?" And it wasn't on the agenda, it's really unfair to the public if they didn't know it's the discussion item. So hopefully, it makes some sense there. And then we always have to have three people here for a quorum. If we don't, then there's... We can't take action. So some of the other practical considerations I want to emphasize to the commission is you can't... A quorum can't discuss items before the commission outside of a meeting. So if three of you go to dinner together, there's nothing wrong with that dinner. But the problem is if you're talking about city business, there's an issue there. There are exceptions when it comes to, let's say, you all go to a Chamber of Commerce dinner and you're all there. That's fine. That's considered a generally open meeting. But if all five of you sat at the same table and started talking about city business, that would be a problem because now you're talking about something that should be agendaized for people to weigh off.
Even if we huddled in a corner and smoked cigarettes together, somebody could say, "Oh, you guys are talking..."
That's the perception thing. So if you're all together and tell the council the same thing, usually doesn't look good. You're all huddled together in some way. So you ever heard of something called cereal meetings? A cereal meeting is not like a bowl of cereal, but a cereal isn't like in line. And so the idea is that one council member or one commissioner tells the other about an issue. So Mr. Perkins calls Mr. Schlutten and says, "Hey, tonight's on the agenda, I noticed, is this particular item. What do you think about that? I'm going to vote, or I think we need more environmental impact study on it." There's nothing wrong with that. There's only two members. But if Mr. Schlutten gets Mr. Webb involved and says, "I just talked to Bill." He's thinking this way. Now you've got three people, which is a quorum, collaborating on an agendaized item. That is a meeting. And so that meeting needed to be agendaized or basically it was not. So it would be illegal and inappropriate. And there are repercussions to Brown Act violations. I think it happens unfortunately a lot, especially like in texting or emails or blogs, stuff like that. You get the commentary about agendaized items easily. And not necessarily ill-intended, but it just happens to go that way. You just got to be careful that that's something you're not doing because there are ramifications. What it means is potentially that... Well, violation of Brown Act is potentially criminal for one. It doesn't happen a whole lot, but it would certainly invalidate maybe the action you're taking on that item. But it's also really... You lose the trust of the public if for some reason the media says, "Oh, the Brown Act violation." And it's clearly planning commission. So some of these things aren't... You don't think they're a big issue, but you know... Like group emails or group texts, I think, are usually a problem. I don't know if they... I won't ask a question. But let's say you all were on emails together about stuff. That's a meeting because you're talking about something. Now, it is okay if I email all of you or Mr. Folsom emails all of you about something and says, "Hey, just so you know, this issue's out there. We're going to talk about it tomorrow night." That's okay. But what I'll usually put at the bottom of my emails is, "Please don't reply all." But I don't want three members replying to the whole email saying, "I'm good to go. I support, you know, what... I want to make sure this item gets approved." Right? That would be an action taken outside of the public.
When Julie sends out the notice for the planning commission meeting, I normally respond to her and just say, "Thank you." And that lets her know, "I got it." I don't reply all.
And that's fine. Yeah, and I should have mentioned Julie at the beginning. She's really what incorporates most of the stuff. So most of your correspondence was with Julie.
Julie and Melissa.
It's okay. You can always respond back to staff individually. And a staff member... I... Or Melissa could pull all of you on a particular item and say, "Hey, I know this item's coming in. We got a big Walmart expansion project or something. What do you think about it? Okay, I know your thoughts." And I go down on it. I meet all... I talk to all five of you individually. So if I know what's happening, that is okay as long as I don't communicate back to you what other members are thinking or you don't participate in them. See, there's a difference there because I'm not a decision maker or less legislation. And so it's okay for you to respond back to them, but just don't do it where you're ccing the whole group. Now, if it's an innocuous thing about attendance, "I'll be there," that's not a decision. And that's just reflecting your presence. So I think that's... Any questions or comments on that? Let's see. So if you want to do immediate action, the fourth bullet, you know, sometimes there's an emergency. You can do that, but it requires four fifths vote to do it or two thirds, at least two thirds. The brief response to public comment. If the public comes up here and talks to you about something not on the agenda, my recommendation is to respond, "Thank you for your comment. We'll have staff look into that particular issue." If you start a dialogue about that thing that's not on the agenda, I think you violate the Brown Act because now you're getting into a discussion or deliberation about an item that was not agendaized. So a lot of times, people will come up and say, "Hey, I just want you to know, I'm really not happy with, you know, the development on Olympic or something." Okay. You should get involved in that discussion. That's a problem. Does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm talking about there? Does that ever happen where somebody comes up and brings up a topic non-agendaized?
Many times.
Many times.
But usually, we tell them, "If they will contact staff, we're on the agenda. We cannot discuss it."
Perfect answer. And the other problem I have is sometimes I've seen where a planning commission gives different responses to people. So some people, they do engage in a whole discussion. And if the next person gets up and they say, "Oh, just staff will contact." Well, it kind of makes that person feel like, "Why was my issue not dealt with?" The same way. You're better off to have the same response to everybody, which is, "Thank you for your comment. We'll look into it and have staff do that to you." Oh, this is kind of a diagram of that meeting. The A, B, and C would be individual members talking or the hub person, you know, Mr. H... If the hub person's telling, meaning it's me. If I'm telling how the other people are voting, then that would be a violation of Brown Act. If I keep it to myself, then it's okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Could that hub person be a non-voting member or... Pardon me, a member of the public?
Yeah. So a member of the public can communicate... The question was, can a member of the public communicate with you about stuff? They can. The problem is, let's say that a member of the public has asked all five of you the same question. You may not know that they've... In theory, it's not a Brown Act violation because they are not aware of it. But it's... Be very careful when you talk to the public about future agenda items because maybe that member has asked all of you and then could report that in some way or be aware of how the whole action can go down. In theory, you haven't violated the Brown Act because you weren't aware that they communicated to other people. So answer is it's not a violation, but you want to be very careful because it could release... It could look bad for the commission when you're talking about something to everybody to prove. They've talked to all of you and you didn't realize it.
I like my response with all my years being a job stewardess, i.e. union rest for the State of California. At this time, I cannot comment, but I will get back to you in the future. And just leave it at that.
Neither makes sense. Oh. Brown Act... So that's the first bullet. Contact with the public. It doesn't apply necessarily with them. Conferences, so open things. You all go to a conference. That's okay that you're all there. You just don't want to talk about necessarily city business. Open and publicized meetings. Open notice meetings. Another... You all want to go to a county meeting. You all want to have the city council meeting. That's okay. Social ceremonial activities are fine if you all go there. You just be careful because of the appearance of huddling or something like that. Another standing committee. Sometimes it's more for city councils, but if you... Because they often will have a subcommittee on whatever, labor negotiations or something. And they'll have two members go to that. That's not a Brown Act violation. I don't believe the commission has any subcommittee to do that. So you don't need to worry about that one. Oh, we'll briefly go through the kind of public hearing process and how it should work. Because this is where the litigation that I've been involved in is where people... It's a procedure wasn't good enough. Applicant feels that they're... Let's say they're... What they wanted was denied or the environmental report wasn't sufficient enough. It's because the litigation is usually because they didn't get notice of the issue or it seems like they had inadequate opportunity to address the council in a reasonable way or the commission. So the purpose of public hearings, like we had, is to give due process, give an applicant due process. And give the public, may not be at all directly involved, an opportunity to comment on it. And then also, it's to make sure it's compliant with zoning code. So here's how a public hearing should go. There should be evidence and testimony and it's only going to be accepted when the public hearing is open. So there's a reason we open a public hearing. We have a comment. And then we close a public hearing. And usually, the order of testimony should be the person who's applying for the particular item and the nose in favor of that application go first. You then have those speaking against the item. Now, the next one is about rebuttal. Rebuttal is not necessarily... Requires a few exceptions where there is rebuttal. I can't think of what it is right now, but... I don't know if you typically offer the applicant an opportunity to come back and rebut what the opposition has said. Does the commission usually do that?
We do that.
You do that. There's nothing wrong with that. I just don't know that it's required in all cases. So do yours? Do you guys usually offer? Sometimes it just makes for a long meeting if it's a real big issue because now the same people got up for the other three minutes and get right back up again. User discretion. If it's a huge item, you don't necessarily have to offer a rebuttal because two or three people, you might as well just make them feel like they're hurt or to hear them.
The only exception I'd say is that... Sometimes you offer the project proponent to come give their piece and sometimes give back more information.
I would say, yeah. The actual project person coming back. If I did that last word, it's usually appropriate.
We have, Ryan, a procedure right on the agenda for the trains. And it only allows for the applicant to be able to...
Okay. I would stick with that. There's nothing wrong with allowing. What could happen though is if you allow everybody who was for it to get out, now all some people are against it. Well, I want to rebut, rebut that. Now you get this train has... Everyone's looking for the last word and where you cut it off. So you leave it to the chair's discretion to try to run that meeting orderly. So once the public hearing is over, you close that and allow for discussion and deliberation from the commission. So now, fair process requirements. This is... I think this kind of goes with, well, sort of with the conflict of interest, but really about favoritism. You want the public to feel like... Certainly, you're in a conflict. You've got to get out of it. But let's say you in particular have a bias or impartial or some kind of favoritism towards certain one. We need to avoid any of that appearance. And there's a case we'll talk about in a second. There's two types of discussion here when it comes to fair process, common law and due process. Now, under common law, people who are coming here need to know that this is a... You guys have a blank... Basically, a blank mind coming into it. That you're going to rely... You certainly rely on your experience and ways of the world, but you're coming in neutral. You're coming in thinking, "What is the right thing to do in this state?" You're not coming in already thinking, "Oh, I just don't like developers or I don't like people..." Whatever the case may be. Coming in fair and impartial. You need to feel like that's the case. So you don't... You can't have a personal outcome in the process or it kind of goes with the conflict of interest. Now, strong opinions, it says, are okay. But you can't be closed minded. And this reminds me of there's a city of Los Angeles case in Asha where a planning commissioner was also an HOA board member. And that board member was, in their HOA capacity, had written a letter saying, "I really don't like this housing development that's going to happen near them in Los Angeles." They were also sitting on the planning commission. And so the development got basically rejected. They had a whole bunch of conditions that made it almost impossible to go there. Well, the developer filed a lawsuit saying that commissioner, according to that letter they wrote, which is not in their role as planning commission but as HOA person, showed... Because in the letter, it said, "I don't like this private. I don't like the developers. I don't..." A whole bunch of stuff that was real opinionated. And the case found that that person was non- impartial. And so the... I'm not sure what happened with that case, but certainly, the commissioner... but certainly the commissioner, they had to go back and have a new hearing. With that commissioner removed, it was really embarrassing for the city of L.A. So I guess my point is, be careful what you say, how they're in the community with regard to projects, and regarding even other things, because you've got to, you need to be impartial and neutral, and certainly at least show that to vote. Now, due process requirements, this is, you know, a hot topic word for litigation. If they don't feel like they had due process, you need to give notice of the action. So we're always going to give, I think, I don't know if it's you, Julie, or somebody, to give notice to folks who are potentially impacted by decisions. So they have an opportunity to come. You need to give people an opportunity to prepare for the hearing, opportunity to be heard, and then you've got to give that fair and impartial hearing where they feel like they're being heard by the, by the commission. Now, due process is flexible, and I say it depends on interest of the state. There's no hard and fast rule, kind of like rebuttal things. What seems to be reasonable, seems to be a fair way to go. Any other questions or comments? I'm not sure how much exactions. An exemption is, basically, developers are required by the city to provide something, some service necessary, because of what they're going to bring in. There's some case law about that. And exemptions have to be reasonable. So sometimes, there's cases where the city will make really unreasonable demands of developers to come in. And those, if they're not directing substantial nexus to the burdens, meaning someone's coming in to build four houses, and we say they've got to build, they've got to put in a stoplight. Well, that's, that kind of traffic pattern probably doesn't really relate to that. But we really wanted a stoplight for other reasons. That would be inappropriate, because there's not a full park.
Excuse me? Maybe a full park or someplace there.
Yeah, well, it depends on the situation. And maybe it does. Maybe that really is what put it really to the end.
Yeah, this is a cost benefit.
It's got to be, exactly. So you're going to be proportional.
We have one of those with the right end.
Yeah, exactly, with the right end.
What happened on that is we put in a zone, which is called, where the cost to share during the time...
Improvement.
They're very, they're necessary and appropriate, right? I mean, if you're going to come in and build 50 homes, or build, you know, a brand-new Home Depot or something, that's going to impact our community. And you are going to be developer, you're going to have some burden in providing for the traffic circulation issues, and other noise of, and those kinds of things. And we can give reasonable exemptions to offset that. We just got to make sure it's tied into what kind of the, the things are that they're going to be producing to the community. I put Public Record Act on, I don't know how relevant this is, other than to make you feel, make you be careful of what you say in emails or texts. So the Public Record Act is another transparency law out there by the state. And the idea is that people in the city, or your constituents, actually, anybody, doesn't have to be your constituent, has the ability to know what is being documented or said in the city. So people can make Public Record Act like they do. Hey, I want to know, I want to see what the city manager makes in a contract. Okay, if the contract's public, we'll produce it. Or I want to know, I want to see a contract that was awarded to somebody to build, let's say, an expansion. They're going to build a new, a new public works project. Well, those, again, those contracts, those documents would be public. They also apply to your records that are related to city business. Now, if there was need, there's a returning client privilege, there's other deliberative process privileges. There's also privileges related to your privacy. They can't ask for your emails between, you know, related to your personal stuff. But people in theory could ask for documents related to this work that maybe you've written. If you've got an email, if you've got a text message, there's, yes. I want to see that email.
Sorry. I would answer this, but I don't know.
I thought she was on purpose, so like, maybe it's...
What's your name and example?
Well, the example I use is the city of San Jose case. So San Jose, last year, there were council members that were, I think, texting on the diocese meetings. And some of the public wanted to know what they were saying. In the end, the court actually did not turn over those text messages, because the cellphone was, it was a private cellphone. So, but the court said, this is a really close call. And the law is definitely sliding towards more openness, more transparency. So if you have any devices, I don't know, does the city provide any, you don't have a...
Do you want to know what I texted on this stuff?
Not you.
Thanks.
Okay. In theory, they could provide iPads, or have the agenda, or something like that. But anything done on that computer could be open to the public. But I would say, if you have an email address that is a public email, it's on your server. Anybody have those?
No.
Well, you guys are easy. All right, for the most part, it may not be...
We're being respectful of the law.
Thank you.
I like him.
I would just say, what I tell folks is, anything you're writing about city stuff, write it as if it was posted in the newspaper or on a billboard you'd be comfortable with.
A black marker on that big white wall over there, yeah.
Because you just never know what's, what's going to be disclosed. So keep it professional, keep it open and honest. So that was kind of word of the wise about what happened with the San Jose case. And that bottom line, be careful what you say and write. So we're going to talk a little bit about, I'll ask Joan or Craig, why not jump in, about land use and planning. Let's have a couple of bullets here, about the nuts and bolts of kind of what you're doing, right? And I, you're all professionals, you've all been doing this, you're probably comfortable with it. I mentioned that the biggest things, or some of the biggest work you need to do is, is with the general plan, specific plan. There's kind of hierarchy, right? It starts with the general plan, it's the whole community, it's done every, it's been 10 to 20 years or so. We've got one that's in the works now. Then you have certain elements within that, like for noise, and for safety. There's, I think there's seven required elements within the general plan. And then it breaks down even further to specific plans, as to specific projects. Then you get even farther into goals and policies. And it all goes down, falls down to the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance reflects, should really tie into that general plan as to what we want the community to be, where we want development to go, where we want middle-income housing, or low-income housing. How is this all going to tie in? And your decisions should all be tied into that. So that's really important as it comes to, when, because you're going to start getting, the general plan will come before you. You'll, they'll review that when it's, when it's, when it's ready. And other plans, like, and other zoning ordinance changes. I know we're also working on modifying the zoning ordinance, and that will come before the planning commission as well. The other one, before I switch you to the other question, I have any comments, is Subdivision Map Act. So this is a state law that talks about how people can divide their land. And there's things called parcel map, or a, an intended parcel map, based on the size of the...
Subdivision track.
Yeah, or lot-line adjustments, they all kind of are related to...
Not necessarily in the subdivision map.
They're not. Lot-line adjustments is separate, but kind of relating to all the stuff dealing with... Subdivision aren't just a subdivision in the sense of, you think of a subdivision of 20 homes. It could be a sequel home, anyone split the line in half, and it's got, or a certain component thereof. And it would come before the planning commission making a decision whether that's a reasonable use, and what kind of impact it would have. But lot-line adjustment, not, not under subdivision map act. But if somebody wants to move a lot line one way or another, that's usually a simpler process. But they also bring that to the planning commission to, to make a decision on.
Is it like a speculative compliance, that's what they do?
Pardon?
It's like a speculative compliance.
Yeah. You can't just do it. You can't just arbitrarily move lot lines, or divide, subdivide your land. There are laws that tell you how that can be done, and it's got to require approval from, from the planning commission. Zoning code, the two issues I think come up a lot of times, and I actually addressed at the beginning, with the conditional instruments and variances. And those are things that people want, basically, they want an exception. They want to be able to do something that currently isn't allowed under the zoning code. And maybe that's entirely reasonable. The zoning code is, can't account for every specific little nuance of the city. It's going to provide general direction. And maybe there is something that you want to modify a little bit to allow.
We do a lot of variances because we have very small lots. And in a lot of cases, because it's a...
Och, gee.
Traffic and hills and everything with it, the lots get virtually unusable without the variance.
Very good. And that's the whole reason you're here. Because sometimes you only want to abuse that a little bit. And it's up to you to call, hey, you know what, that seems a little bit unreasonable to us, that kind of a setback, or that kind of a change. But for the most part, if they're reasonable about it, it just comes before this board. You assess, how does it fit into the whole flow of that neighborhood, and approve it if that's, if it's okay.
And it's not something that we wouldn't do for Joan or anybody else, you know, just because of that situation.
You do it based on purely what the information's in front of you. No bias, no impartiality, just what's the right thing to do on that. Now, I have one slide on CEQA, but this could be a whole, I've gone to training sessions for days about CEQA. And you could literally study this for days. We're going to do this in just a few minutes, just to give an overview. But the big thing about CEQA, I think the most important thing, is to realize it's a process, it's not a permit. Some people think, did you get CEQA approval? Well, that doesn't make sense. There's not an approval of CEQA. There is, is a process by which environmental impacts need to be studied. And it allows the public to weigh in on, hey, if you're going to do this project, these are the environmental concerns I have. Environmental concern, not necessarily, how does it impact, you know, an animal in that region, or habitat. It's noise, it's pollution, sound, all those things going to environmental issues. But it provides the public an opportunity to weigh in, to see if there is an environmental impact. And, and it provides you all an opportunity to hear, oh, I didn't even realize that, that this housing project was on this area that's going to modify a lane in some way. And then it gives you an opportunity to know more about what the environmental impact is. But CEQA is ripe with nuances, and is ripe for litigation. If we're not doing, we're not following the procedures on it. The most important thing is, if it's a big enough project, we'll get to the end, that we do an environmental impact report. So we'll go through this a little bit. Like I said, it's not a process, it's a permit. What we're trying to do is mitigate environmental impact on a project, yet there are. The first thing we do when we analyze a project is, well, first of all, everything is subject to CEQA. Every ordinance, everything that comes before the planning commission is subject to CEQA. There may be exemptions for, well, so exemptions to CEQA where CEQA doesn't even apply. Something like for things that are like initiatives, or things that have no, literally no environmental impact, you can, you can say that. If it's an ordinance or it's completely in a live environment, it's exempt from CEQA. If it's something that does have some environmental impact, we're going to do an initial study. And I don't know, the first question I have is, do we do initial studies in-house, or do we usually contract that out?
We do them in-house.
Okay. Most staffs do that in-house, because you, you can do it in-house. You can do an initial study, or going to assess, what kind of an environmental impact will this project have? And if it comes back, there's basically four options. One is there's no environmental impact, which we can do a negative declaration saying, no environment, no impact on the environment, and we can move forward with it. Second one would be that there is significant environmental impact. If that's the case, and that's the finding, then we do need to do an environmental impact report. And that takes different shapes as to that process. You do a draft EIR, then a final EIR, and it takes, and it's expensive. I mean, there's a reason why projects and developers who don't want to go into EIR, because it delays it, and they're very expensive. Now, that expense is usually not borne by the city, it would be borne by the developer. But a lot of times, you tell a developer, hey, you have to go spend several hundred thousand dollars on an EIR and delay the project for several months, they may say, you know what, we're not interested, we're going to take off. Then the city has a decision, well, do you go forward without doing an EIR? That makes me very nervous, right? If we, if we had some indication that there were significant environmental impacts, there's a reason for that. And we already, and there's, in this area especially, Northern California, there are groups out there that, that'll file lawsuits when, when the proper procedures haven't been followed to, to make sure the project has mitigated, or at least addressed all those environmental effects. So you're going to see from the group here, you know, if, if an EIR is required, we're going to, we're going to want to, we're going to want to make that happen. You know, we don't want to shortcut those rules. Though we are, want to be as friendly as we can to developers. The middle ground is if there's, there's some environmental impact, but no, no significant environmental impact, then you can also do this negative declaration, right? And that's what you, sometime, I think we're going to, well, today we're going to mitigate a negative declaration. So that is the case. The fourth version is, there's significant environmental impacts that can be mitigated, right? And they mitigate it to the point that they are not significant. And that's where you'll do the document, that would be a mitigated negative declaration, which tells you, yeah, there's an environmental impact. Let's say there is a housing project that's going to have some impact on the roads. Well, we can impact, it's okay, as long as there's appropriate signage, maybe an additional turn lane, or something like that. And with those changes, now you can move forward, and there wouldn't be significant environmental impact. So I'm talking about CEQA at a 30,000-foot level, and kind of giving you an overview on that. But just realize that it's not a permit process, it's not a permit, it's a procedure that we're trying to be fair and reasonable, and it's mandated by law on that. Do you have any comments or thoughts on that?
I just would say, I think that the example for our city is the airport project.
Yeah.
And, and the city at that time opted to do a mitigated negative declaration on a very old general plan without environmental clearance on that particular piece of property. And it did end up a lawsuit, with the settlement being that there will be an environmental impact report required when that project was formed. Whereas if the city had taken a step back at the time, and really looked at that scenario, and opted to do the EIR from the get-go, you're probably the project on the ground.
First of all, the negative deck that was done on that was very thorough. It was more than most environmental from CEQA. Things are done, there was traffic studies, there was everything. That was just bogus, you know? But the idea was, as you said, we were trying to get the process going. Nobody was sliding anything by.
Yeah.
And I know when they did the Kelseyville lumber project over in Kelseyville, much bigger project than this was, and they took prime ag lands and never had a report. The report was, you know, 40 pages, and slid through without the same people saying anything about it. They just didn't want to see progress here.
You just run the risk. You never, you take, you just don't know if, all it takes is one applicant, or one person to try a foul line, and then you've got a big problem. But you never know, maybe nobody will complain.
I was just going to say, I think Chuck Brans is a very good point. The city did have a whole bunch of studies done. We've got a whole file drawer full of all of that. And in fact, they were probably sufficient enough to have supported an EIR, had that next step onto. But, but the point is, is right, as you said, it only takes one person. And when you're dealing with, with planning documents that are as old as ours were at the time, you need to run that risk. And when we, the city got caught in that, and that risk.
And this time, if we do a complete EIR, the same people will do the same thing. So, yeah, that's just what we're like.
And we do have two projects that we're in the process of working on. One being the Walmart expansion project, that is going to be going forward with the EIR. We've got a meeting starting next week. And then, the developer that we're talking to, with, about the airport project, he absolutely knows he's going to have to do an EIR, so, back to that. So those are, I have a question for the commission about CEQA. I can try to give you an overview of it, and truthfully, the nuances we would, we would deal with as they come up. And I'm happy to help you with that. I think that's, all right. So now you're fully oriented to be a planning commissioner. Are there any questions or any other comments that anybody up here would like to make?
I've been to a lot of the CEQA meetings, just to see what it is, and got to meet a lot of the people that are concerned and have a voice that they want to have. It's very, very interesting, sit at the back of the room and just see who wants what EIR, or different projects. It was just very, very interesting.
There are people that make a living just on this. This is a very complicated area that folks are specialists on. Some make a living, you know, doing EIRs and helping mitigate permits. Some make a living on suing and, you know, not following CEQA. So we've got to make sure we do it right. But thank you for your time and attention. We talked about a lot of different things. Going back to the conflict of interest, brown eye stuff. If you've got a question, my cellphone is up there, my work number, my email address, all the stuff is up there. So if you need to contact me, if you've got a question, feel free to do so. Obviously, Julie, Melissa, Brian, we're all around. Joan will even answer your call if you mention us. I'm retired, but...
Oh, no, she, no, she doesn't get retired.
Our, our goal is to, is to keep us out of trouble from the, from the beginning.
And I have issues down the road. If I can just add to that, there is a website that you might want to take a look at as well, the Fair Political Practice of the Commission, MPPC. They actually have a certification program on FX that you might want to review. It's about two hours. It's very odd, but sadly, I finished it.
Yeah, I believe most of the planning commissioners have finished that course, if not all.
Every year, we do a stage program. We used to have, county council just give us the program, and when they automated everything, we did it through that.
Restored it. The price is much better.
I just took a picture.
Price is much better on the...
Well, actually, it wasn't that bad from county council, because they did county at the same time, so... It doesn't make a difference. And Ryan, I want to thank you for letting me down the circuit and going through this. A lot of what we talked about here is perception. And perception can be deadly compared to reality sometimes, depending on what perception really is, and what's at stake. It behooves all of us, and the management, as well as the commission and the council, to do everything we can to present a fair and impartial hearing for any project that comes up.
Perfect. Couldn't say it better.
Thank you.
The question is, say, I just have all this to you via email. So I hope it's...
I was expecting a test.
Are those hard copies we get to keep?
No, this is the one hard copy. Julie will have this, it'll be put into a binder, so it gets available. This is a lot to print out. If there is any part of it that you would like, let her know. But there is one more that I will leave with Julie to send out to you, which is a handout on CEQA, which Ryan provided to, to us. So anyway, the hard copy will be available if you ever wanted to sit down and, or use it in a hard copy form instead of...
I started to print it on my computer, my printer, she thought, I'm not going to do this.
Those were all just PDF files, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I just loaded them onto my iPad, and I just sit here and scroll all through them. So if anybody wants to see what I have on here, notes to my son, take the garbage out.
A lot larger than Cindy noticing back and forth.
Happy birthday, mother, today. So it's just that kind of stuff.
Okay, we've got a couple sitting here, and I think they stayed because they thought they might still have a chance to talk about the project that was really, what this meeting was originally called for tonight. As I explained to the lady earlier, we opened the public hearing, we closed the public hearing after calling for public to participate, and we'll reopen it again on July 21st. And at that time, if you have more comments, you want to make it more than welcome to do so. And also, as we explained earlier, I'm assuming that your wife, the lady that's with you, whatever. Anyway, you're here for the same reasons, apparently. What I explained to her is, you can go to the front counter during normal business hours, and you can get the staff report on the toll, how it might affect you or not affect you. And you can run a lot to do that, and we kill it before the 21st. And if you have questions, you can bring them before us.
Can I ask one question?
Not about that. Not about that. Sorry. The hearing is closed for the time. Okay, do we have a staff report tonight?
I've got a brief staff report. As you know, last week, we had a joint meeting of the planning commission and the city council, where we talked about the zoning code update process that we're going to be going through, and our design review manual that they're going to be working on. One of the suggestions from our consultant is that we put together a steering committee that would be made up of several members of the community, as well as someone from the planning commission and the city council. So, just would ask that the commission make a nomination for somebody to sit on that. What that would entail was, it's going to be general guidance in the drafting of the city's zoning code update, design review manual, probably only need about three times over the course of the process, so this won't be a tremendous commitment outside of these meetings.
Well, I'd like to nominate Dirk for that position. He's probably the most knowledgeable of the five of us in regards to zoning laws and map regulations, and he would be the best choice if we have to represent the commission.
Okay. And I think, Joan, what we had talked about is the process for this, is we ratify that at a future meeting.
If you need a second on that, I...
Brian, is that something they go on, or can you just nominate as a chair?
I think it's okay to just nominate as a chair unless there's a big issue with that million.
No, I read his application, he filled it out for playing, and that's the process followed by the city council, so I think that would be appropriate.
I'm sure you can say it again.
I said, "That's the process followed by the city council, so I think that would be appropriate."
In that case, I can hear.
I didn't interview, I'm sitting, but yes.
Thank you very much, see you then.
I have a plot of faith in it. Anything else for the staff? Yes.
My gracious.
I will cede my time to the former city manager.
That was official. I just wanted to take a moment to indicate that, obviously, this is my last official meeting, my official termination date or retirement date was yesterday. I just wanted to thank all of you for the opportunity to work with you, we can have major development projects come through during my tenure here. We did start the general plan, the zoning ordinance, and those kinds of things, which will be coming before you. But I think that as a group, and certainly a few of you are new, that you've gelled, and I think this is a good planning commission that will see a lot of activity over the next couple of years, and I think you're situated particularly after tonight to be able to move forward in a very professional way and project that to the community and to those developers that want to do business here. So, thank you for the time that we've had, and I have appreciated it very much and the support that you've given me. Thank you.
Very much appreciate the guidance that you provided for us, and a lot about land use from you. You're still a lot to burn. You did a really great job for us, and I, for Martin, appreciate it very much what you've done for the city as a whole, as well as for the planning commission. I'm going to miss you, and great to get some pictures. Anything else to question? Meeting adjourned.
Okay. I'm sorry.